Move on then. Thank you very much for that presentation, Pierre. Item 10.1, this is a site plan review. Consideration of a site plan review application within the multifamily residential/historic district zone to modify an existing single-family residence to, one, remove and replace nine wood windows, and, five, the project is conditioned to be categorically exempt from CEQA. And I believe, Ms. Hunter, you have the staff report?
Do. Can you hear me?
Beautifully. Thank you.
So, Site Plan Review 90-04-R is a request from the applicant to replace nine wood windows with composite inserts. The window frame would remain, and the proposed composite inserts would be installed from the interior. The subject structure is within the Cedar Ravine Historic District, located at the southeast corner of Thompson Way and Cedar Ravine Road, and was constructed in 1901. The structure is a Queen Anne Victorian with numerous characteristic features, including a pitched cross-gable roof, varied siding, an asymmetric facade, a large covered porch with decorative columns, ornamental gable treatments, and decorative window trim and wood windows. The subject property previously came before Planning Commission in 1982 for a conditional use permit 82-03 and Site Plan Review 82-06 to use a single-family dwelling as a professional office, and again, in 1990, under Site Plan Review 90-04, to return the occupancy to single-family dwelling, add a garage, and restore the interior and exterior of the residence. The home and grounds have been meticulously maintained since. City Zoning Ordinance, Section 10-410, Historical Buildings in the City, requires that all alterations to the exterior appearance of the building within historic districts where the alteration is visible from the street must conform to the SOI standards and guidelines. The SOI standards and guidelines recommend that historic windows should be repaired when possible, and when too deteriorated to repair, replaced with Windows Meeting Standard 6, where the replacement windows shall match the old in design, color, texture, and where possible, materials, for example, wood for wood. Based on staff analysis, a total of five windows are visible from Cedar Ravine Road, as shown in Figure 5 of the staff report. As such, staff recommends that those five windows be replaced consistent with Standard 6, and the remaining windows be replaced as proposed. The request, as amended by staff, is exempt from environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA Guidelines, Section 15301, Existing Facilities, and 15331, Historical Resource Restoration and Rehabilitation. Further, the project, as amended, is consistent with the Community Design and the Natural, Cultural, and Scenic Resources Sections of the General Plan, as well as Zoning Ordinance, Section 10-410, as the project would be consistent with the SOI standards and guidelines for rehabilitation of historic buildings. On Monday, June 5th, the applicant's consultant provided additional information on both the composite and wood inserts. For the five windows visible from Cedar Ravine Road, the consultant proposed the use of a similar insert with wood rather than composite. This insert would still retain the perma-shield exterior. Staff has provided printouts of the proposed inserts provided by the consultant, including cross-sections of both the composite and wood inserts, for Planning Commission consideration. Staff recommends that Planning Commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, adopt the findings in support of SPR 90-04-R, and conditionally approve the project based on the findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes staff's report on SPR 90-04-R.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Appreciate it very much. As always, a very thorough and succinct report. I'll go ahead and open it up to commissioners for questions of staff, starting with Commissioner Keeney. Any questions of staff?
Thank you, Mr. Friend. I want to make sure that I'm clear on the handouts that we received tonight at the dais. There's the 400 series. This seems to be essentially the same as what was provided in the original package. Is that right?
Yes, with the addition of cross-sections of both window types. So, one shows composite cross-section, and the other, the wood with the cross-section.
So, is the 400 series a composite, or is it a wood?
I think it's just the type of window.
It's a type of window, and so you can have it made of composite or wood?
That is my understanding.
Okay.
And we may want to question the applicant in more detail.
I just want to make sure that this is the same as, let's see, we were given, this was given. So, this is the same information, just in a different format?
Yes, the additional information provides the cross-sections.
Okay. I have another question. Your staff report was, as always, very complete and clear to read, but I wanted to ask if you were able to confer with a preservation expert in the writing of your report?
I was not.
Okay. And another question that occurred to me during your presentation just now, we go over the history of the site plan reviews, and is there any sort of accounting of how much of the exterior carpentry, or even the woods, the windows themselves, are they, how much of that is actually original to the structure? Is there any information on that?
I don't have it with me, but we do have very thorough plans in our records from SPR 90-04.
And so, from your regulation, was there quite a bit of work done back in, when was that, 1990?
We did focus on the windows.
Okay. And did they replace the windows at that time?
Um...
Or did they work mostly on trim and...
I think it was mostly the casings.
Uh-huh. Okay.
Well, we'll ask, but we'll...
We look forward to speaking with you here.
You'll have an opportunity to address the commission after we're finished with staff, and we're anxious to hear what you have to say on the project.
And I'm sorry for taking up so much time, Ms. Hunter, but my last question for you is typically when we get these packages, we get a copy of the actual application from the applicant. This time, we have quite a few pictures. Why is that?
Yeah, staff was trying to cut back on what we would consider superfluous information. So, if the applicant, depending upon the type of application, has descriptions or information, we would include that, but we're not going to include the application. There's a lot of information that's really for staff, as far as, you know, who owns the property, the deed, all that kind of information isn't necessary.
Okay. I appreciate you streamlining it for us, and I'm really happy to see that the applicant is here so we can have the questions answered directly. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something, and it was, it's a change, so every time there's a change, I want to make sure that we know why. Thank you. That's all I have. Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Chair Friend. Commissioner Carter, any questions?
I do. I had a question regarding the CEQA determination. So, you're finding it to be categorically exempt. Is it staff's opinion that it's only exempt if it's approved with the amendments, as you guys recommended? Or is, if we were to change your, or not follow your recommendations, would that change the CEQA determination?
It possibly could change our CEQA determination, because any time a modification is made in a historic building, especially since this is on our inventory, it's within a historic district, if the changes are determined to be detrimental to maintaining the historical integrity of the house, then we may look at a different CEQA determination.
Okay. And then I just had a quick question about this last line here on page 11, under the environmental review, where it speaks to if we deny the request, the project would be found exempt from CEQA Guidelines, Section 15061. It's just a really kind of weird and confusing. I looked up that section, and it's just, it's kind of ambiguous. Yeah, it's ambiguous. It's unclear, thank you. It just states that the project is rejected or disapproved by a public agency, so could you just kind of clarify on that?
It would be exempt as it would no longer be a project.
Exactly. That was my understanding. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Smith? Any questions of staff?
Yes, a couple things. When I look at the photographs, there's one indication where they would be removing grids. That's from a design that's used for illustration. But on the photographs themselves, there are storm windows, and you can't tell, I can't, if beyond the storm window, there is grids. I'm just going to, so that we all know what page I'm looking at, I'll just hold this up. I think everyone can recognize it. So, on this page, you see one of the windows, and it's, I assume, covered with a storm window. On the top, does the original window inside have grids?
It doesn't look like it. I don't think so.
The applicant might be better to answer that, but my understanding is no, it does not.
Then, at the bottom, on the outside, there's some molding. Does your recommendations call for keeping molding consistent with this?
The frame of the window would not be touched. All of the exterior trim element would remain.
So, what's being added would be a replacement of what's inside?
Yes, and it would be installed from the inside of the structure.
So, what we're told from the applicant's information is that the outside would be white. What about the inside? What is the inside wood material? What color is it? And what would it be after this is done?
We don't look at the inside. That's not part of our analysis.
Is it part of our purview? I don't think it's part of our purview.
Not. We only look at the exterior.
Yeah.
As visible from the street.
I have other questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Lepa, any questions of staff?
No, my questions have been addressed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. First, Kristen, did I hear correctly in your report that the applicant has already agreed to change from the composite to wood, or no?
No, this was a call with their consultant from Home Depot, who was inquiring as to whether the wood with the perma-shield would suffice.
Okay. All right. So, first, I have to admit, I'm totally confused on this. I'm not a builder. I'm a handyman at home, and I haven't done anything without a permit, I'll say that. But I don't understand, I don't really see a difference between, I couldn't see composite clearly versus wood and the materials that were submitted. I'm not going to worry about that too much. But I don't understand, if everything is being done from the inside, what would we, what can you see from the street? If everything is being done, and none of the outside's being changed, how would it look any different?
There is still a frame for the insert.
There's still a frame for the insert?
Yes.
And how, I don't understand, and I don't want to get too technical on this, and we'll open it up for the public hearing, but if we're talking about the historical character, which is the criteria, I think, that you're using for disallowing the composite, it's totally lost on me how that composite material versus the wood material changes the character from only, because the criteria is what can be seen from the street. We don't care about what can't be seen from the street, but how would we be able to tell in viewing from the street that it's different?
The criteria in our zoning ordinance requires that anything visible from the public right-of-way must follow the Secretary of Interior Standards. And the Secretary of Interior Standards state that repair when possible, replace with like-for-like, or when not feasible, then you would look at alternatives.
Even when it's done from the inside and not from the outside?
Yeah, Chair, if I could maybe chime in on this. You know, basically, we're following, staff is following the Secretary Interior Standards. So, in other words, the criteria isn't only appearance, it's also trying to maintain the integrity of the historic building. So, in other words, it's similar to the discussion we've had on the past in other applications, where a owner of an historic house wants to remove the wood windows and put in vinyl, for whatever reason, even though, depending upon the distance from the window to the street, the passerbyer may not know whether it's vinyl or wood. But that's not the criteria. The criteria also pertains to the materials to be used, because if you change the material, you may have a house over time that would cease to be historic. You've lost it. It may look totally historic, but it's not. And so, again, staff is following the Secretary Interior Standards. It's not to say that the Planning Commission has no discretion. Your discretion is based on the applicant's ability to demonstrate that there are technical difficulties in meeting the Secretary Interior Standards.
Or significant expense difference.
Yes.
And not to be argumentative on this point at all, but you understand why. I get frustrated because, well, your argument about changing the historical character, yeah, it's only for that part of the structure which can be seen from the public right-of-way. What can't be seen from the public right-of-way could be vinyl, could be plastic, could be aluminum, could be anything, you follow what I'm saying? Which clearly does not meet the standard of preserving the historical character and quality of the structure. So, I find challenge in the logic or the argument, and that's not directed at staff or the city. I just find a challenge in the logic. So, I just wanted to make sure I could kind of understand that moving forward.
No, I understand, and I think it's one of those things where the city went through a lot of effort to come to this point, where it felt that it was losing at some point in time in the past its historic character, which is important to the city and to the residents of the city of Placerville. So, that's why the city elected to define these historic districts, to protect its historic homes in these districts, and apply the Secretary Interior Standards. So, that's a, it's a high bar, but, you know, the city went through and did adopt those. So, staff does its best to evaluate a proposal, and a clear example is what happened to the property owner of those 1870s or 80s houses that were there at the corner of Chamberlain in Sacramento.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if you recall, we had an applicant that took out the wood windows and put in vinyl windows. That ended up going on appeal to the city council, and that property owner was required to remove them, and that property owner was able to find wood windows and installed them to better maintain the historic integrity of the house. So, it is our hope, we're, it's probably something I should do under reports, but I'll just remind you that we're getting closer to defining, defining a date for that city Planning Commission workshop with an expert, and hopefully you can retain those questions, and we can have a good discussion on this.
And so, there's no misunderstanding. I completely support the city's position on this and what we've done on this. It's the application of which I always find a little bit challenging, so, and looking forward to the workshop. With that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Yeah, Commissioner Keeney has a question? Go ahead.
In light of, Ms. Hunter, you use the phrase "like-for-like," and I realize that that's shorthand, and I think that that has, it's been overused, and actually, it's become kind of a, I don't know, code word, trigger word, I'm not really sure what, but that doesn't appear anywhere in the standards. Every time one of these projects comes before us, I review, and I'm with you, Mr. Friend. I appreciate the work, the reason that we have the preservation ordinance, but I'm not comfortable with the strict application of the, this like-for-like, this focus on that. When I read the Interior SOI standards, there's a process, and so, I'm looking at page 33 again, and it absolutely, to my reading, allows for a compatible material to be used, and, you know, so I'm just thinking out loud, I'm sorry, because of what just transpired. I am struggling with the application of these standards to buildings that aren't in our inventory or on a historical register. I find it a little too strict. So, perhaps, if you would just state one more time for my clarification, what is the difference from the street view? You know, I appreciate that we're trying to save the stock, the materials of the original, but again, as we've just mentioned, the city doesn't have a concern on the interior appearance. It's simply from the street. In fact, not even, we don't all get to walk up onto the property and take a close look at this. So, I don't see a picture of what the exterior view would be. So, if you know more about what these windows look like, how would changing, on the first page of the photos, what's the difference going to be if they were allowed to use the 400 series Anderson window?
Again, we're not necessarily looking at the appearance, per se. We are looking at the zoning ordinance specifically pertains to what you can see of the exterior from the right-of-way, and that is then required to meet the Secretary of Interior Standards and guidelines.
What I'd like to do, Commissioner Keeney, because I'd really appreciate what you just brought to our attention, and on page 33, when we get back to our discussion, I'd like to come back and discuss that in a little bit more depth, and then maybe also engage staff. But in the meantime, I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing. This time, we invite the applicant or their agent to come before the commission. Commissioner Smith? Hold on. Go ahead, Commissioner. One moment, one more moment. Commissioner Smith, go ahead.
I think this is consistent with what two of you have just discussed. My question is, in the past, we've looked at vinyl versus wood. That's been what we've looked at. Tonight, we're looking at a third consideration. The previous discussion was much simpler, because the quality of wood is greater in insulation, so it's not going to be exactly like what was there before if we put in vinyl. Vinyl is going to have insulation problems, and that's just based on current economic data, not talking about what petroleum prices will be like and petroleum products 30 years down the line. If wood frames are damaged, we know how to repair them with some ease, but what about vinyl? If vinyl is damaged or cracked, how do you replace that? So, this is a brand-new topic. How efficient is the composite? How much does composite look like wood? What are the insulation qualities, and what are the cost factors? Because so much of vinyl window sales has been based on the idea that it's going to be low maintenance and last for a long time, but that doesn't take into account the consumption of energy, which is substantial. So, I'd like to hear more about that third option that we're looking at tonight, which is composite.
Thank you very much. All right. Now, I will go ahead and open the public hearing, and I'm hoping that the microphone is working. Maybe you can tap it? Yeah, it sounds like it's working. Great. Welcome to the Planning Commission. Thank you for coming.
Hold on. This is my wife, Patty Foley-McHusson. Anthony Moon is my name. We're the owners of...
And I would like to read what I've wrote and written, excuse me. I'm not used to public speaking.
Sure.
I disagree with the assumptions and recommendations made by the Planning Commission Staff Report, Placerville City. Our home was not well-maintained. It's referenced throughout the report how well-maintained it was. The previous owner had window box planters on each window with a sprinkler system going up onto each window. There was also a greenhouse in the back that included siding of the house as part of the greenhouse, and it was watered continually. We have spent approximately $50,000 repairing siding, soffits, pillars that had dry rot. The replacement windows we are requesting were never composite. They are wood with a perma-shield cladding that looks like wood. Because of Title 24, no one in California makes all wood windows without cladding because they're not able to give a warranty. These windows by Anderson, and also I think Marvin makes them, are specifically designed for historical homes and are used throughout California. Gwen from Home Depot presented some examples in other cities where they're used. Many of our current windows are not functional because the sash pulleys that move the windows up and down have deteriorated or broken apart. To replace these windows would require taking out some of the old molding, pretty molding, on the inside of the home, and that would not, and they would not comply with Title 24. Another thing specific to me, I want to bring up the issue of aging. Thermal regulation, regulatory control as an older person. I have difficulty sitting next to our inefficient windows. My skin is very thin, and it causes me difficulty in heat and cold. I'd be happy to open my arm and show you if I want to, but that's a problem for me as an older person. And I'll let my husband speak.
Please come to the microphone. Please come to the microphone. Good. So, we can hear you, and it's on the tape. Thank you.
Okay. Well, like my wife said, one of the things, unfortunately, I would not be here, we would not be here from the very beginning of what I understood this application process meant. Now, Ms. Hunter's done a great job, okay? I have no problem what she did, but like my wife just said, we were sort of kind of blindsided. I got the email from Ms. Hunter like on a Friday. I didn't want to open her two little things that she had on her email, because I figured everything was going fine. Because when I started this application process, I didn't apply for four windows to be done. That's nowhere in the application. I applied for nine windows to be done, okay? Not five or four, okay? So, had I been sitting with Ms., or prior to all that, you guys have all those pamphlets. I had to make 10 of those suckers, okay? I did that, because as far as I understood, this was sort of kind of like, not already to be given, because we did have to go through your committee to get an approval, so you guys would understand that we're not changing the integrity of my home, okay? We bought our home because we loved it and we believed in maintaining it. We've appreciated everything that other owners have done, especially the lady before us. She put in a brand-new air conditioning system, upgraded the electrical, and the other thing about, like what Ms. Hunter said...
Listen, make sure you don't get too far away from the microphone. You do have an excellent voice, but I still need to make sure it's well picked up.
I was in the Army, and I used to direct people.
Ah, okay. Thank you for your service.
You're welcome. So, the point is, when she said that, you know, at the application process, like I said, when I was sitting down with her, and we were having the application after I made all those tent copies, I sat with her, and she said, "Yeah, so this is not going to be like a preliminary thing, and you're just going to be given the permit." No. We had to go through you guys to let you know what we were doing. And my wife and I, we've always maintained the integrity of the place, right? And we've upgraded it, because we, as we're getting older, we've added a generator to upgrade the house, because my wife is on medicine. Thank God, I'm not that way, but I still take medicine.
May I ask, how long have you owned the home?
2013, I think.
Fifteen.
2015?
2015.
We moved up here in 2011, and we bought 10 acres, and then we bought this little small house a few years later, because we knew that we weren't going to really survive the 10 acres as we were getting older. So, we bought this place, and we fell in love with it, and we believed in the integrity of the area.
So, let me ask, let me ask you, just based upon your wife's opening remarks, and I'm sure my fellow commissioners have questions too, but just from my clarity, you bought the home in 2015. You had to do some significant improvements to it because of water damage and whatnot, and the windows, and so, the windows, as I'm seeing, and the home is beautiful. I drove by, and the photos I have, it's a very attractive home, but everything I'm seeing from the front elevation, did you have to replace all of that?
Well, we, we lived in the home when we first bought it for one year. We were involved with a property lawsuit in our other house, and it wasn't resolved, and we decided to lease this out. So, we, after 2016 to 2021, it was leased to other people, and we weren't actually in the home, you know, with landlords, but we had a property manager.
But architecturally, my question is...
Architecturally, we had to spend a lot of money on painting when we first moved in because of the water damage from the greenhouse, from the water damage from, on the windows from the sprinklers that were under the house. There was damage underneath the house when the sprinklers broke, and, you know, and we removed trees that were overhanging and causing dry, actually, they seemed to cause a drought. they seemed to cause dry rot because when we moved back in 2021, we put the leaf guard system in, and they found that almost all the soffits were, had dry rot.
Okay.
Even though we had put a roof on and had been examined by the city just a couple of months before, our roofer obviously should have pointed that out to us, but he didn't.
All right. What I'd like to do, what I'd like to do, I'm going to start with my fellow commissioners because they're going to have questions, I think. And I think through that, the question and answer process, we might be able to fish some of this out. So stand by. I'm going to start with Commissioner Keeney. Is that okay? You ready, Commissioner?
Oh, you know, I may want to-
I can defer.
Have some other questions that come up during our discussion, but-
Okay.
Thank you for-
No worries.
-letting me go first. And I appreciate that you already asked, so you bought the house in 2015. Were you made aware, or when did you learn that your house was in one of our historic districts?
But, but, but I just want to add, we had a baby grand piano at our other house, and there was no room for it there. We were told by Margot Delfino that her husband could get like an exception, and we could, you know, put out the living rooms so that the baby grand piano would, would fit. So I think we had an unrealistic, we decided not to do that. But I think we had an unrealistic idea of how strict the changes were because I don't-
I apologize for my poor hearing, but I just want to make sure I understand that your realtor did indicate to you that, that you knew that-
We knew that we were in a historic area.
And that you, okay.
Now, the point that I want to make on this before anything, and this is what I was going to say before, was that we knew we were in a historic area. Our house is not a historic house. It was built in 1901, and it's been periodically upgraded. And the one thing that, like what Ms. Hunter said, in 1990, they did that big giant addition where they put the garages, they built a little guest room right next to it, and this is the strange thing that they did. So my house has nine inefficient windows, these two-by-six-foot windows that are totally inefficient, the other four which encompass the back of the house. When they built the guest room and the garages, all those windows in the guest room around the garage, and the four windows that encompass the back of the original house are the same windows. And they are of a vinyl type of material. They are not wood.
And they're energy efficient.
And they are energy efficient. So luckily, in the 1990s, those windows are still good today. What is inefficient are the other-
Okay, I have a couple of questions about the windows that are the subject of your proposal before us. One, Mrs. Munoz, you, these are Title 24 rated windows. You made mention of that. I just want to make sure I understand that the Series 400 meets Title 24.
They're Title 24. They're wood windows, and the only thing that's composite or different is the, what they call the perma shield cladding on the outside.
Okay. And my other question about the subject windows, did you talk to someone who could possibly repair the existing windows? You mentioned that there are broken sashes and-
And that would have constituted reframing everything around, and then just like what my wife said before, yeah, we can get a master carpenter to build windows to match that with wood, with double-pane windows.
Uh huh.
But you know what they can't do? They can't give us a guarantee because they couldn't. And then, of course, that would mean, since they are old windows, like my wife said before, they have those old weights. In order to put in new windows, they would have to totally restructure the front end, and they would have to go in and out.
They would have to go into the structure to replace the weights and make up functioning.
The outside, yes.
Oh, from the outside. They couldn't do the work from the inside.
Reframing, it's not going to be able to reframe just the outside.
And the master carpenter that you spoke with, so you got an estimate that you thought was more expensive than the Series 400?
And he told me in a very, you know, very-
Get close to the microphone. This is important. Get close to the microphone.
Well, he said, "Yeah, I can build you the window, Mr. Munoz. You want to spend 10 grand a window?" Okay?
And what's the approximate cost of the Series 400 window?
The windows will be efficient. That's the most important thing.
So the Series 400 window is much less?
Thing is the efficiency. And no windows in California after Title 24 are allowed to be built unless they meet the standards for efficient windows. And we're on a limited income, both retired. Our electric bill is somewhat reasonable in the summer because we have solar, but it is completely unreasonable in the winter. And as Kurt mentioned, the windows don't even look pretty because we have those, and this is by the previous owner, those plastic-
Storm windows.
-storm windows that go over them, so you don't even see the window. And then we have this new window, you're going to see a window.
So that's, that would be a change from what we see in these pictures. You're not going to have that second-
No, you won't need that.
-storm window.
And also, these windows, this is why they need to be changed, is because back then, they were still-
Get close, get over to the microphone.
They were still working and efficient because they were only, what, 10, 15 years old. But now, 30 years later, they're not as efficient. And like I said, my point in being here is not for four windows. I didn't come here to four windows. I came here for nine. And in order to keep the house looking the same way, because from what we were told, and just like Ms. Hunter said, is that you will not even notice the outside because they're not even going to touch it. And on the inside, basically, the insertion is taking basically a strip of wood that holds the old windows in, leaving the casing as it is, putting one molding to hold the window in its place, reframing or remolding inside, and we're done.
Yeah. That's a, that's a great description. I did a window replacement on a house I owned in another town, but yeah, we, everything was able to be done from the inside. The exterior was intact.
Will not be touched because, like my wife said, when we remove those planters, the one thing that is going on right now, the inefficiency of the windows, is still rotting the sills of those windows.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'm going to let some of the other commissioners ask some questions. I appreciate sharing all that information. Thank you very much.
That was helpful. Commissioner Carter?
Thank you. First, I just want to let you, I did do a site visit, and I wanted to compliment you guys. Your home is absolutely beautiful. Your attention to detail, fastidious upkeep, it's amazing. I want to commend you guys. You're an example for your entire neighborhood. So thank you for that. Absolutely beautiful. Did you guys, when you talked to that carpenter, did you guys get a quote for repairing the windows?
I did not.
Microphone, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I did not want to actually get a quote because previously, speaking to my wife, wood windows because of Section 24, it's just not comparable now. And what she brought up, and like what Gwen, our sales lady from Home Depot, told us is, these windows have been used in San Francisco Millionaires Estates, Los Angeles, they're being used all over in some places that have commissions like yourselves who have to go through this process. And so this is not the first time that these windows would be installed in an area like ours.
Understood. Thank you. I guess my, what I am trying to figure out is, what is a composite? There's nothing in the literature here that tells me what, what's in the composite. I mean, the definition would seem to be a mix of materials. From what I'm looking at the cross-section here and what I'm reading on this description, it appears that the interior of the window is entirely wood, but it appears to be covered in weather-resistant vinyl exterior, if I'm reading this correctly.
If I could just interject, I did a little investigation on that, Commissioner Carter.
Excellent.
I think what they mean composite is not, the wood is real, but it's a, it's a cladding. So they call composite, as opposed to composite wood that you might build with. I don't think that that's involved. When you read about these, these replacement windows, it's the cladding that, okay, so if you look at-
What is the cladding? What is cladding?
Part that's, you recall composite because all windows nowadays would either have, what is she, aluminum, vinyl, or this, this is, perma shield is developed by Anderson Windows to look like wood. And earlier, it was asked what the color on the inside of the wood is. It'll be white, just like our windows now are white on the inside.
Understood. Okay, so that cladding is vinyl essentially that's covering, no, I'm sorry.
No, it's called, it's called perma shield. It's not vinyl.
It's not vinyl.
Okay, because it says-
It's like, it's something like a wood kind of thing.
Okay, because it does say right here in this, this handout that we were just given today, it says, "With the combination of weather-resistant vinyl exterior, the strength of solid wood frames, and the beauty of wood interior." So that's, I guess, that's where my, that's where my confusion is coming in because it does say right here that it's a-
Well, I'm not. That vinyl has got that scuddering cover, or whatever that is, and that's the shield that it gives it. So you're not looking at a vinyl window outside, okay? You're looking at this, just like, you know, on a car where they put that special coating on it after they painted.
Clear coat.
This is basically what it is. It is constructed, but then it's got that perma scudding coating on it. And like I said, it's going to be white, it's going to match everything and be better and more efficient than, you know, than, than they are now.
And no storm windows over it to block the windows, you really can't see it at all.
Understood.
Storm windows are just plastic.
Well, they're no longer storm windows.
Well, yeah. They don't work, but anyway.
Okay. And once again, I want to appreciate, let you guys know, we appreciate your patience in answering our questions. I know this process is frustrating sometimes, and we really do appreciate you guys going through this with us. I think that's it for right now. I'll reserve, after some other commissioners ask questions, to possibly follow up.
Thank you. Commissioner Lepa?
I think, I have, I just have some confusion on, so the, the white is the exterior, and the wood that we're looking at on this handout would be the interior?
Yes.
This is, okay.
And it also would be white.
Uh huh. Okay, on-
Both sides.
In your home.
Yeah.
And so, and this kind of speaks to a higher level of, of our discussions around this, but would the pine, if we, if, instead of the white, separate from this, if someone were to select pine, would that kind of give the look of wood with the wood, because it's got wood, and then it's a pine color? Would that eliminate the issue around the white being different? Am I making sense about that?
I don't think pine would look good on our house. I think-
Right, right. No, so I'm actually asking just on a higher level because this has come up several times, and we're, as Commissioner Smith kind of said, this could be a little different medium for what we're looking for, for the wood windows. And so I'm just trying to get clarity on that in general. But should someone pick this with the pine look, and it has wood, so this wood would, or the white would be pine-looking, would that satisfy the exterior visual requirements for it being a like-with-like material because there is the wood? And then the perma shield or whatever it is, if they had picked pine, would give that wood look? Is that acceptable under the Secretary of Interior standards?
First, I want to say, staff apologizes if we use like-for-like. We're not, we shouldn't be using that-
Okay.
-term. But to get specific to your question, again, you know, staff is looking at a high bar in its, it's using the same material unless you can't. If you can't use the same material, well, then the planning commission will have the discretion to find other technical reasons to use something other than the wood that's the existing historic windows on the house. Technical or financial?
I was going to say, and we've touched on cost around this before.
Again, if you're looking at appearance, staff is not looking at just appearance. Because then it could be vinyl, it could be anything. Again, because then it's just eyes of the beholder walking along the sidewalk. They may not know what the material is unless they got much closer to the window. And so that's why Secretary of Interior standards aren't looking at appearance. I mean, appearance is only in terms of the style, molding, you know, the type of ornate, whether it's a Queen Anne's, you know, you have, that's, that's looking at appearance, but it's more the, you know, the form that's being used, or the gingerbread, if you will. But we are looking at the same material. But again, I think the property owners would, if even it was wood, they'd paint it white so it would look even more the same. So that's why we're not looking at appearance. But again, I think it really depends upon your discretion, on the testimony provided by the property owner, if you feel that there's technical reasons why you should allow then a different kind of material, as the Secretary of Standards do allow.
Yeah. And that, that kind of touches on just the higher-level discussion that we were hoping to schedule soon for the city council to just kind of clarify in general what our priorities are around this. But I had been at the home show and actually had seen these windows, which I wasn't super aware of, with the pine, like, look. And then seeing today that there is wood in the, in the windows presented, I guess I'm just wondering out loud and sort of thinking out loud about what our kind of compromise could be that are realistic, affordable, and maintain the overall spirit of the windows that we're looking at in the historic district. That was just sort of me, I'm trying to come to understanding of sort of what's, what's acceptable going forward versus a $10,000 window per, per thing, which is unattainable for a lot of people, and would hope that our goal is to keep these maintained and looking nice and looking as they should. Is this an option for us to consider as a kind of happy, happy medium? Am I making sense about that?
Yes.
It's, okay. So I had actually been wondering about these around the last Cedar Ravine House. I wasn't at the meeting that day, but watched it. And was, then when these came to my awareness, I was like, I wonder if that's a happy medium. And it was actually going to be a question of mine around that before this one came up. So I guess it's a long way to say, I just, I wonder if this is a nice medium, and I'll defer to my other commissioners' opinions and the city council as well when we speak to them, to achieve a wood look with wood in it that doesn't cost $10,000 per window.
I just want to add that I talked to Gwen today. She said that, I mean, basically, it's going to look like wood that has like a white, just a white stain where you can see the wood through the stain. But you cannot paint these. They're not paintable. I mean, you could paint them, but the warranty would be gone, gone, yeah, they'd be ruined. You cannot paint the outside. The inside can be painted, but the outside with their perma shield, it's like wood that has like a white stain on it.
Any other questions, Commissioner Lepa?
Not right now.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I just wanted to begin by letting you know that I've seen your house many times. I travel by it three times a week to go to Marshall, and I've always admired it. It's impeccably done. You talked about something I didn't know about, which was the addition of this garage and guest house. But actually, that's consistent with that era. You'll note that the Blair Kimbelik House, the big one on the next block, has a carriage house in the back where horses were. So it's consistent with that. The yard work is immaculate. It's consistent with modern water conservation efforts, but it clearly shows you're very attentive. So everything about it is consistent with photographs I've seen of historic properties in the following block. So that's not the issue. And just to let you know, if it was simply vinyl versus wood, that would be very easy for us. To let you know where we're going, we have on one side wood, which would be historically consistent, and then the other folks are saying vinyl. But we need to know more about the composite. I've read some literature to be educated, a new subject for me, and it's described as, some of them by Anderson, as being twice as strong as vinyl. And I've seen some composite materials that look like wood, the kind of composite materials that are used for decking. And it comes in all kinds of colors, mahogany, walnut, oak, doesn't matter. It covers it all, and it looks like the original stuff. But we haven't heard it from you. So that's, that's the framework we're operating under, is to see how consistent it would be with what was in the past or of that style. How much does these cost compared to vinyl and compared to wood?
Well, for one thing-
That'd be one factor.
...I talked about before we even started doing this, is that we were not going to go with vinyl. One of the jobs that I had when I was working-
To the microphone, sir, sorry. Thank you.
One of the things that I learned a little bit about vinyl because I worked for an architect- an architectural firm very early on, and vinyl was only given maybe a 10-year lifelong, until it started deteriorating. So I already knew from then, and I, there's Milgard and others that do the vinyl, and I've come to learn that, no, we were not going to do that. If we could have found a company that would have given us the same guarantee that, and the efficiency, that's the important thing here, it's the efficiency that these windows provide, forget the look, okay? Because you can make it, like you said, sir, we have a deck on one side of our house that's the old kind of decking, and then on the new side, where the guesthouse is, we put in brand new kind of decking that looks just like wood. What we were looking at is the efficiency that it's going to bring to us. If we could have found that in someone that could have built it in wood, and given us the same guarantee, we wouldn't be here, we would already have them installed. But the reality is that we're constrained with one section that says wood windows can't be used. You can keep looking and reading all you want, but the true fact is that these, this is the product that they're installing in million dollar estates. If my house was that valuable, believe me, I wouldn't be standing here in front of you right now, okay?
So let me, just to be clear, and Commissioner Smith, if I may just take your time, I won't, just to be clear, um, if you, these windows meet Title 24.
Exactly.
And if you were to use wood material, they would not, you'd be in violation of Title 24.
Exactly.
And then they would still be inefficient.
Okay, so that's a technical, note, for the record, that's a technical issue. Okay, sorry, back to you, Commissioner Smith.
It's just to ask, Commissioner Lepper asked you about the pine finish, the wood, the pine color, is it textured? Is this material, this compound material textured to look like wood, if you're up close?
They brought us a model, you know how they bring up that little thing, and they open up like a window, and they have this little thing, from the inside, like my wife said, Gwen told us that the inside is wood, it's not fake. You can paint that, stain that, you can do whatever you want, the outside is the one that's protected, that you can't. You paint it, you do it, you ruin it. But on the inside, if we wanted, like say for instance, my wife painted all the trim inside, and inside we have very beautiful-
Wood and vinyl.
Victorian type of trim around the windows and doors. My wife painted it all white because we wanted it to match it. So from what Gwen showed us on her little example, it is white, and it looks just, it's smooth, like we wanted it, and it looks like wood, and it is wood.
Well, but they're asking about the outside, and the outside looks like wood that has a white stain on it.
Yeah, so the-
Even though you don't care about the look of the house, I, I think having it look like pine would just be like a-
The last question is-
Commissioner Smith, so I want to go back to Commissioner, Commissioner Smith, do you have any other questions?
Just to finish up-
Hold on, folks, give me a minute, Commissioner Smith?
Again, to educate us about the difference between all, all three of these, what about the strength of the composite material? How strong is it compared to vinyl or wood?
According to the manufacturers, a lot stronger.
That's the end of my questions for the moment.
Thank you very much. I have a, a couple of questions that, and this may come back to staff, and so I'll hold it, but I, I just kind of presumed that composite, when I read composite in the report, meant, well, it's not, it's not virgin wood, it's wood ground up and mixed with some other materials. I'm, I think composite in this context means a combination of wood and vinyl. I think that's what composite means, and I'll come back to staff when we bring it back for discussion, but I really think that's what composite means. I don't think composite is a unique material, I think composite means a combination of wood and, and vinyl. Is that right?
It's a generalization, because you're right.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, okay, so that, that, that helps some of my confusion.
And that's-
So I want to go back to, you mentioned-
They put that coating, that's the big difference too.
Gotcha.
They put that, that coating on-
It's like, it's like Teflon back in the day, right, that magic, okay, so I want to go back, you mentioned something else I found very interesting. Your windows, many of them, if not all of them, I had a house that had the same thing, has the weight and pulley system, right?
Yes.
You're not going to be using that, or you're abandoning that, correct, when you do these windows?
Yes.
Well, what they do in the installation, so we don't change anything, it's, it's insert, right, because we're not reframing anything.
Right, so, but the weight and pulleys are no longer going to be used to open and close the windows like they are now, so that historical feature is going to be lost.
Yes.
That's a historical, that's absolutely historical, that's going to, for the record, another technical issue.
The windows don't work with the pulleys anymore, those have already broken, and the weights are just on, on top of the sill right now.
Okay, I, I don't think I have any additional questions for you, I appreciate your patience in helping to, actually, more importantly, I appreciate the fact that you came here to speak about your project, because so often we have applicants that don't show up, which makes it very difficult sometimes for us to make decisions, because we have questions. Before I let you go, and go back, any commissioners have any additional questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Smith has-
Can I ask-
Hold on, one more, Commissioner Smith has a question, then yes, you can have one closing comment.
You've told us about, you know, how far back you've dated the house, but do you have any early photographs of it to let us know what the windows once were? For example, you've talked about removing grids from at least the Anderson design. Were there grids in windows back in 1919 or whatever?
No, not these windows.
That was just, their picture shows the grids are possible to buy.
Or put or not put.
And put or not put, our house never had grids.
I think your question was, Commissioner Smith, you don't have any historical photos of this house? Yeah.
Historical information.
Okay, all right, thank you. Please, obviously, I'm sure you'll remain in the audience, we may have additional questions throughout the evening, so thank you. Yes, sir, you had one more comment?
Well, just the only then, the most important thing on what you decide, okay? It's not four windows that we're going to do, it's nine windows.
Correct.
And, so, other than that, like I said, we want to keep the integrity of the house because we love where we live.
Sure.
And I think, like the gentleman here said, the director, people that walk across the street or any there, they're not going to, believe me, after the installation, you're not going to be able to tell whether the windows have been changed or not, that's how good they are, at least from what-
Great. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public- I'm going to close, I hit the wrong button, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action. Before I do that, I just want to go, go back to staff. Am I correct then that the word composite in this context is simply a broad term that means it's a combination of wood and vinyl, that's what composite is, it's not a special material in and of itself?
Yeah, it's interesting, because typically when I think of composite, I think of a homogeneous type of material, like, like a vinyl or a wood, it's all vinyl, it's all wood, it's all composite, which is a combination of whatever compound some chemist worked up in a lab.
Right.
For example, Trex on the deck, that's a composite, so that's what I think of, it's something-
Or it could have been a combination of, of woods that are ground together and glued.
Looks more like what I would call a hybrid type of window, it's kind of reminds me of a hybrid car, that's gas and electric, so this is wood, and, and this different type of material, looks like the, the sill is, is Fibrex, and the sash is a Flexacron, and-
I, I think it's wood and vinyl, I mean, going from the extra, I don't know what my other commissioners think, but from the photos that we have, the information we got with the arrows, where are you looking?
Chair, Ms. Friend, I took the liberty of confirming of what I, I did some internet investigation when this came up before, when we were talking about possible options, and we're on the right track. It is, when they say cladding, it's things that are joined together, so on the outside it is a vinyl, and Anderson Corporation calls their proprietary product perma shield. So it is on the outside vinyl, on the inside it is the beautiful wood that they have shown us in the brochure, and this is best illustrated in the handout we got tonight, where you see, actually, if you can look at this page, I think this pretty much answers all-
Correct.
-questions. So it's not a solid vinyl, it's vinyl attached to wood on the inside, and so that, the, the use of composite, I think, is a bit of a distraction for the layperson.
So thank you for that, so just to make sure I understand, Teflon then becomes a good example, right, Teflon pan? So you're, you're telling me that it is actually wood that's then covered with this proprietary thermal shield-
They call perma shield, yes.
Material, which is, is vinyl, which is, is kind of like a Teflon or a painting, for lack of a better term.
As opposed to a solid vinyl, I don't know if you're familiar with those kind of windows, but they're, you know, they're, I think there's probably a metal frame, but both sides are vinyl, and it's like, you know, pieces-
If we didn't have, if we didn't have the perma shield exterior, like in, in this cutaway, this, all this white would be gone, and we would just see the wood, correct? So then what they-
That wouldn't be an Anderson window, this is what Anderson, this is what our applicants have chosen, this is their-
In this, in this particular, in this particular exhibit, just so I'm clear, take away the, the perma shield, that's simply removing this white coating, so the, the part that's exterior then to the window is this wood here, right?
With the, okay, on the sash, they, they call that Flexacron?
This is what's exterior to the house, correct?
There you go.
This is the exterior part to the house.
Exactly.
They've sent this perma shield, sill, Fibrex.
Interesting, yeah. I noticed on the sill description, they call that Fibrex, and I think that is a material that, that in itself could be considered some sort of composite, but it probably is bound together with a, a vinyl type of product-
Perma shield.
To, to create what they're calling Fibrex, is their registered trademark.
All right, that, this is, that's, that's a lot more helpful to me. So, so then a couple, I'll just, I'll just kind of start the discussion then. And Pierre, several times this evening, several times this evening, you, you have used the term technical reason or technical exception, and, and several times I've also added financial consideration, which you didn't acknowledge, so do you consider the financial part of the technical or not to be considered? Because the standards and guidelines clearly say that financial considerations are costs, I'm not sure what the exact language is, economic considerations are clearly a, a filter or a consideration that we're allowed to use. So I just want to be clear on that, because I, I caught that in, in our discussion back and forth on this.
Yes, I think that's the discretion of the planning commission to make that determination, I'm sure that's going to be something that will be discussed more thoroughly at our joint workshop, but I think what, what, you know, at least in this point in time, what is an economic hardship? Is it a hundred dollar difference, or a hundred thousand dollar difference?
Right.
Somewhere in the middle.
Yeah.
Ten thousand dollars a window, sounds like an awful lot, so if they were, if, for sake of discussion, they were required to do all nine windows, it'd be ninety thousand dollars.
Right, which would be certainly cost prohibitive.
Forty thousand for four, that's, that's a lot of money.
So, so, and, and then the Title 24 not being able to meet Title 24, I see as, as a, as a technical consideration. I'm going to submit-
I'm sorry, Chair-
Yes, go ahead.
-if I can speak to that, I'm, I'm kind of puzzled by the Title 24, because you can buy, there's manufactured wood windows that meet Title 24, so I'm not really sure-
All right.
-who is saying that it wouldn't meet Title 24.
All right, well, we'll hold that. It seems to me, this, that, kind of where, where I'm at right now, just to let my fellow commissioners know, it seems to me the question before us is, does this or does this not still qualify as a wood window, even though it has this additional material applied to it? Is not the foundation of this window still wood? And I'm, I'm just going to stop there and then open it up to discussion. The chair recognizes Commissioner Carter, and then Commissioner Lepper, unless you would like to yield your time to the lady from the north. Commissioner Lepper?
The only thing I'll say is, I think you were conferring with Commissioner Carter when I was asking staff about this, I was saying, does this qualify as a wood window precisely? Because it's a wood window, I mean, it's got wood as its primary component, and this is what I was also asking staff, is that, when I saw you at the home show, so I know you may have walked by the same thing, is that, is this an option for us to consider going forward as inefficient, affordable, and similar, not to use like with like, but similar in the spirit of-
There's a, there's a term that Commissioner Keeney had in, on page 33, it was not, it was not similar, it was something else.
Right.
Compatible, or whatever it was, and I would point out that since we don't care about appearance, right? Appearance is not an issue with this, right?
Because we're not seeing it?
We're not, well, staff has said, we don't care about the appearance, it's, it's-
That it's what-
What it's made of.
Right, and so that's what I was getting at earlier and questioning, and saying that I do hope we can come to a, a nice understanding at our joint meeting, but to me, this is a wood window, a, a modern wood window, if you will. Yes, it doesn't take, doesn't have the pulley system and stuff, but we're not necessarily requiring that, and so I had seen this, it had come to my attention that these existed after watching the last meeting that I was not at in April, about the other Cedar Ravine House that has the same issue going on, and I'm, I'm wondering, and again, just speaking out loud, of if this is a happy medium that we find that isn't a $10,000 wood window, but also isn't 100% vinyl window? Because we've had these come up over and over again, and we have got to find something that's agreeable for both the applicants to be able to actually do, that they will come before us and be, you know, willing to work with us rather than go and just install the vinyl windows like has happened before. I would, I, I think this is a really nice medium for what we're looking for, if, if the core reason is that we need to have wood. So that's sort of my take on this, I, I like this as an option, and I'm wondering if it fits our historical desires of town, if this is a, an achievable medium for us to agree on, and, and that's what I referenced too, when we do have this joint meeting, I would really like to get clarity on what we value in the window and what the base requirements are for it, so that's my, my thought on it.
Thank you, and it's possible that we could make a finding, that these are in fact wood windows with an enhanced protective covering, so if we're, get to a motion, that might be an item that we could use as, as a possible finding. Commissioner Carter?
And that's kind of where I was going, I wanted to kind of look at this a different direction, so, quick question for staff, if they did install a full wood window, do we have any say over how they protect that wood on the outside of their house? Like, do, do we have, they could protect it with paint, they could protect it with stain, there's, there's no materials that they can't paint on the exterior of a wood window?
No, the, the painting with, of the trim, that'd be up to the owners.
The, the reason I ask that is that I, I'm kind of looking at this as a treatment of a wood window. It's protecting the underlying wood window, and I think if we look at it, kind of getting back to what you were saying, as a treatment or a protection of a wood window, that's kind of, I mean, that, to me, that makes sense, just as a measure of protection, and not necessarily a component of the window, I know, I know it is, but that's maybe a different way to look at it, as it's just a protection measure for a wooden window.
And to that point, theoretically, they could use gunite. They could spray it with gunite, as a protective outer coat, or a rubberized material. I mean, see that-
Molding is not good.
Yeah, right, I mean, I mean, so now, now we're getting into treatments, which we don't, you follow where we're going with this, so.
Yeah, I would say that that particular option you're describing probably crosses the threshold, it'd be like saying, well, we're going to do, I think you were using gunite, well, if they were going to stucco or something like that, that would come before you.
And a rubberized paint, they could use a rubberized paint. Right, so, okay, all right.
I'm still saying, I think it would staff's interpretation that we would bring that proposal to you for consideration.
Okay, all right, so Commissioner Keeney, any additional questions or comments?
Are you ready?
And eager anticipation
I really appreciate this discussion and actually the realization that what we're looking at is a wood window to my understanding when I read clad you know that's a process but it is bound to the wood and as you I think accurately have pointed out it's something to make this window more more durable than a wood window because of that cladding my other concerns with this project I think we've touched on some of the other important goals that we have in our general plan you know we are focused on historic preservation for this particular house because it is within our historic district that we're trying to preserve the the integrity of the historic district although as it was pointed out in the staff report and as the applicant pointed out this house itself is not historic no one it existed when we did the survey nineteen eighty-five but at that point it wasn't included and you you look at there's an example in our design guidelines of what our historic inventory looks like and it 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 names all sorts of specific features and and Ms. Hunter that's why I asked you if you had consulted with an expert because I took a look at the development guidelines and I saw one of the examples of our historic inventory and it clearly outlines you know the the features that you would look for in a and this is was characterized as a Queen Anne style I think you remember that from the report but itself in and of itself is is not historic thank goodness it's been updated and preserved and it looks wonderful today but we've touched on other goals that are in our general plan including energy efficiency and you know Title 24 that's gonna improve the energy efficiency as well as the comfort as was pointed out of of the structure so we have other goals to preserve our housing stock that's goal F goal G to conserve existing affordable housing I'm not really sure that this lovely house falls into that but category of affordable housing but it is preserving you know housing stock and I am much more comfortable balancing multiple goals in our general plan when these issues when these projects come before us I think I would feel differently if this particular structure did have an entry in our historic inventory or if itself was on the state historic register and the reason I say that I you know I have read these SOI standards over and over again and as long as I've got the microphone I just want to read so that everyone has is hearing what I've read and it's on page four it's in the introduction to these standards and it says that the standards are to be applied to specific rehabilitation projects in a reasonable manner taking into consideration economic and technical feasibility and I have read this over and over again and it's the reasonable manner that allows us to look at options and you know I thank you for apologizing and let's let's try not to use that term like for like because when you read these standards specifically these were developed for historical structures that had been recognized characterized and documented and in fact there was funding to help restore them and so that's why the standards are as specific as they are given that there's still leeway as we discussed earlier Commissioner Friend on page thirty-three it talks about replacing and that's where the standards themselves talk about the flexibility to find a compatible substitute material and I think that's what we I think that's what we've found today and that's my thinking but I appreciate your insights that it's not just a compatible substitute it's an improved replacement and you know it is a wood window for a wood window so I you know I I really appreciate everyone's insights and I think that we all we think this is a terrific structure it's been maintained it's a benefit to that historic district you know we had a project come before us a few years ago where there was a tear down and what happened with that it hadn't been maintained that is my fear when we put up obstacles and we make it so difficult for homeowners it make it unaffordable for them to improve their homes windows leak that leads to water damage that leads to rot and so we can all see where and and we've had it come before us where it just simply could not be repaired and this I think you know the house is in incredibly well preserved shape but these windows are going to be an asset and it's going to actually protect the structure even even more than the effort that you've already put into it so I appreciate the work that staff did but I I my inclination is to include the staff information in our report but I I would prefer that we don't accept the amendments I really like the project that's was described this but before us this is a very high quality window I would think I don't know six or months or a year ago I looked at these Anderson windows and I saw examples of where they're being used in historical or in older homes across the country and rather than Commissioner Smith brought to our attention the difference between a wood and a vinyl or you know I think we all have we recognize that that is an inferior product what this applicant has brought before us is a superior product that's an enhancement and I think that we can find the we can make the findings to substantiate you know to support the the project as presented
I would submit then as a finding the language that I would offer that we find that a composite window as submitted in this application is a wooden window which has been improved with the application of a protective covering and meets the intent of the Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines and city applicable city codes that's what I think is the finding
Could we I I think we should get away from the the term composite actually I don't
Composite the problem is the composite is in the staff report and if we go and if we go against the staff's recommendation because the staff is recommending against a composite I think we absolutely have to make the finding as to why we find composite is used in this case is in fact a wooden window
I see
I I think that's important so that's kind of where I would be there's one other question I have for staff on this and then Commissioner Smith I see your hand go up you heard the discussion about the abandoning or the not using or integration of the pulley system in the sash to raise and lower the windows that isn't that a historical element or character or feature of of this and other homes of the era and and why does that not come into consideration even though we can't see it
It's because we can't see it that's why we do not look at the interior any changes the interior of a house sometimes you could look at the exterior of the house and it has the same features and look as it did you know a hundred and some odd years ago but you go inside the house and it's a fully modern house because the the city did not impose any ability for our decision-making process to address the interior of any of the structures
What's that Swedish town that's down there by Lompoc Solvang I remember years ago Merriam-Waughburn saying we don't want empty facades like Solvang or something and this this discussion just kind of seems like that that we're we're simply going for that you know movie set you know facade kind of thing okay well that's that's just my own commentary I'd be happy to oh Commissioner Smith I'm sorry you had a comment
I just wanted to share with you that my views are consistent with what's been described I do see it as wood I guess I have a question about the brochure that was on our dais when we came up here was this part of the package or was this provided by staff
It was not part of the package it was submitted by the applicant's consultant yesterday afternoon
Thank you I think what's helpful about this is is that when you look at the wood that's where vinyl so poses a problem because that's where much of the energy is is lost you have energy savings with the double pane but then it all goes out where this wood is now and again I I'd like more education about the composite material because the way it's been described and I've read a dozen articles the last year but less on the composite materials I have seen windows that were described as wood covered with vinyl but this was composite material it's much different it's like when I looked at composite materials used for decking there's different types but a lot of them all of them look a lot like wood difficult to tell the difference but some of them are fireproof which is an additional advantage to that kind of material I just wish we had more material about this but I'm persuaded with my colleagues that it does consider a wood window
Thank you and the Chair is much appreciative of you offering your position whether it's for or against I think it's really helpful for fellow commissioners and for the Chair Commissioner Lepa you have a question or a comment
Yes I have a question is we right now in our findings or recommended conditions it separates the five visible windows from the four is your desire to replace all nine windows okay got it that's good thank you so would it be appropriate then for us to just say that they could replace all nine windows with the four hundred series vinyl clad wood windows
Where you're looking at attachment
Condition attachment one
Yeah we would modify we would have to modify attachment one
And it would remove basically all of the wording except for replace nine windows with the four hundred series vinyl clad wood
Do you need to keep the separation of visible from Cedar Ravine Road versus not visible is that
I don't think so because they intend to use these throughout so I think if they were intending to have a separation then it would matter but he just verified that they're gonna their intention is to use
Yeah so what we're approving we're gonna approve their their request their request is to is to change
To do wood throughout
Is to change nine windows so I think that's what we're gonna approve we're gonna approve the nine windows again the Chair would just remind any potential maker of the motion that we do that the Chair would actually insist on a finding that regarding a composite window we we find it to be a wood window I think that's essential for the integrity of the motion since more than likely we're gonna go against the staff recommendation in this case at least that's what I'm reading from my fellow commissioners and and the Chair supports that A question
If I may real quick too we're also gonna have to make a finding I imagine to address the SEQA determination that's why I asked that question in the very beginning it was the opinion of staff that if we use these composite windows that it would affect the SEQA determination so we're gonna figure out a way to address that SEQA determination in this finding also
If we make the finding though do we need to do that if we make the finding that we're we're consistent with we're not inconsistent with standards and guidelines we're not inconsistent with city code we've made the finding Kristen
Yes if you make that finding then we would just remove as amended by staff
Oh great
Okay that excellent that's why I asked that question in the very beginning because I knew that was gonna come up later so okay thank you
And Chair staff can make another couple of comments I would not address nine windows because we don't have discretion over those we're not gonna if they happen for whatever reason if the applicant were to change those other windows we're not gonna get involved in that so really we should just stick to the four windows they can do whatever they want with the other windows and I'm not sure we want to use the term composite because I don't believe this is a I think it's a clad window that has two different types of materials that are bonded to each other and composite again using my Trex material on a deck that's a composite material
Vinyl clad wood window
So but don't don't you use the term composite in your staff reports
I what I'm saying is it was probably an incorrect characterization because I'm looking
Well I was gonna use composite in quotes
What you could do what we have done in previous staff reports is
Alright so
Have us go back have staff amend the staff report to update it to your finding
Okay then how about the finding simply that the wind we find that the windows submitted in this application are a wooden window which have been you know improved with the application of a protective covering so we take I take
Leave it at wood window
And not even that they meet the criteria for a wooden window period
I think that's the
Described as a vinyl clad wood window
That's our finding is that this is a wood window and
Wood window with vinyl cladding
Meets the SOI standards
Okay well then in that case
That would be under finding number three is that where you want to
Let me take a look and see where I wanna put that
That's where it discusses visual qualities
The difficulty with what the sheet you're holding up is Series four
Right here four hundred series windows and doors
And vinyl clad above it
So if we describe it as a four hundred series if we describe it as a four hundred series vinyl clad wood window then it would be I think hitting what we're discussing right it describes it as they describe it and as we feel it is it's a wood window with vinyl cladding it's not a vinyl window with wood you know does that make sense
I agree
So I think as long as we say that if we describe it exactly as it here I think it's appropriate and hits it it's the four hundred series vinyl clad wood window would be the specificity
Well do we even need do we even need to specify it do we need let me ask let me ask Pierre do you do you think we we should have a separate finding that we find these to be wood windows we should be that overt
I would I would call them a wood clad window
Wood clad window and so that should be a separate finding would you say
I would just say that you make the finding that the that the proposed Anderson referencing
I'm just trying to find where I
This four hundred series window
Just as a separate finding
It's a separate finding
Okay so finding number seven then
A viable
Just make it finding number seven
But it's a finding where you're finding that this is a suitable substitution for the existing windows
What's the SOI compatible I'd like to use I'd like to use the term compatible since that comes straight from SOI if that's the term they use that's a term we should use
Term
Was on page thirty-three
Page thirty-three right
Compatible we find that these are a compatible material
A compatible substitute material
Yeah compatible substitute so if someone couldn't put that in their finding compatible substitute material and that'll can a finding number seven and I think that will
And did let's I would like to specify the Anderson
Yes
Series four hundred
Yes I would say that the Anderson Series four hundred windows we find them to be a a compatible substitute as referenced in these standards correct right so then going through these finding number Roman numeral two number one wherever we see as amended by staff is to be removed right
Right that occurs
Several times several times
In the findings
Three four five six times
Yeah
Basically every single one
Do you want me to let's see I've got it lined out starting on page eleven on two one the request delete as amended by staff is exempt and then again under three the project request again delete as amended by staff is consistent with Placerville general plan number four the project request delete the next four words is consistent with general plan number five again delete as amended by staff number six project request is consistent with city of Placerville deleting as amended by staff and then under number three conditionally approve SPR ninety zero four dash R next line delete amendments I think delete amendments and findings oh wait
We're amending since we're amending recommended condition on attachment one I think amendments project information amendments and findings will stay no I wouldn't delete amendments because we're going to amend
Oh those are as opposed to staff amendments
And on attachment and on attachment one we're going to amend
Thank you
Condition number one correct so and we're 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 amending it by we're 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 deleting everything after same material
I think it was recommended to say
Add inserts of compatible material
Replace five windows with the four hundred series vinyl clad wood windows and then we could keep the second part because it's irrelevant so and two replace four windows not visible from Cedar Ravine with and then we could change the change the.
See composite, see, that's where, that's where I saw composite.
We can take that out.
With the 400 series windows?
Yeah.
Or do we even need?
I don't think we need to clarify.
Do we even need?
Proposed inserts?
With.
I think that's also an essential thing for our understanding is that this is an insert, all the work's done from the inside of the structure.
Well, they are inserts. The question is, do we need, if we just say the 400 series windows and we don't have to get technical as to whether they're composite and or inserts or anything.
Do we need to touch on the four other windows or can we just reference the five?
The five?
The five.
We have five windows that are visible. We have to deal with those.
This is an insert, all the.
What, do we even, do we even have to, do we even have to address the four other windows not visible?
Do not.
Okay, so we can strike that out of, out of recommended, so that makes our job easier.
So in condition one, it would be replace five windows with the 400 series vinyl clad, Anderson 400 series, 400 series vinyl clad wood windows at the existing primary dwelling located at 3079, right?
Yes, correct.
And strike anything after visible through there to add.
Approval is based as well as condition for the story, site plan, site photographs proposed, okay? Yep.
Everything else is standard.
Okay, I like that.
Okay.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion.
Going to do it, Chris?
Okay, I'll move.
Yeah, do it. You got it.
I would like to make this motion that we proceed with, okay. Adopting this, I'm sorry.
Microphone, Commissioner.
Stickler, but the thing that's been referenced as vinyl clad is a Home Depot document. It's not Anderson. It's what Home Depot offers. The brochure that was given to us by Anderson, the glossy brochure with markings on the back, consistently uses named permaguard. It never uses the word vinyl. We can use vinyl for clarity, everybody's going to know what we're talking about. I just want to make it clear that the word vinyl clad appeared only in a Home Depot printout, not from Anderson.
My preference would be that the word vinyl not appear anywhere in any of our discussions, frankly.
Okay. So are we ready to move forward?
Yep.
Okay.
Here we go.
I'd like to make the motion that we adopt this staff report as a part of the public record and make the following findings in support of SPR 90-04-R request. And to save everyone's time, we are going to, I would like that we make the findings as amended here tonight, June 6th, on points two, one, three, four, five, and six, deleting the words as amended by staff, adding condition number seven as, would you like to read condition seven one more time just for the record? Chair friend?
We finally proposed, the windows proposed by the applicant, the windows Anderson 400 series represent a compatible substitute as defined, as described in the Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines, and further that we find that they are in fact a wood window.
Thank you for that. I hadn't been able to keep up with the.
And I just did that off the top of my head.
So that's adding finding number seven, and then adopting number three, conditionally approve SPR 90-04-R located at 3079 Cedar Ravine Road. Furthermore, the motion includes the amendment to attachment one, the recommended conditions of approval, deleting the phrase replace four windows and adding, let's see, so that it would read replace five windows visible from Cedar Ravine Road with the proposed Anderson series 400 windows. And I believe that is all the amendments that we have made here tonight. So that is the motion we have, I would like to make.
Did we delete, there's been a motion, is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Motion and a second.
Just sorry, really quickly, what I had written down is describing it as not vinyl, but a wood clad window. So is that how we're going to?
Wood clad.
Anderson 400 series wood clad window.
Wood clad, under the finding seven?
Both seven and under one. I think that's a good, solid descriptor of it. That doesn't include vinyl and includes the word wood, which I think is good.
Friendly amendment to the motion and you accept that.
I accept that.
Okay. Did we leave, did we leave an attachment one in the change? Commissioner Lepper, could you read the condition, well, let me just, since the maker of the motion was Commissioner Keeney, we deleted with inserts of the same material, that was deleted, right? Approval, replace the five windows with, okay, so we deleted with inserts.
Everything from visible through inserts.
Okay. Gotcha.
I'm sorry, actually, we did visible from Cedar Ravine with, so the word inserts to inserts.
Is gone, okay. And we retained at the existing primary dwelling, okay, through the parcel number, and then everything else on attachment one is as it is?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. We have a motion and a second duly made. Any further discussion on the motion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chair Friend?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations, your project has been approved. However, note that there is a 10-day appeal process. Someone could appeal the decision. Hopefully that will be unlikely, but just so you know. Thank you for helping us this evening understand and coming to represent your project this evening.
Thank you. You're welcome. Can I ask something?
Sure. At the microphone, please, and the microphone guy in the back.
There you go. So you've approved nine windows?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. And if I do hit the lottery, which will be this weekend, I will not change the integrity of our home, but I will want to move a couple of walls. Maybe we'll see each other after this weekend or something. Thank you very much.
All applicable permits must apply. All right, do we need to take a, I don't know, sometimes folks would like to break. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn five minutes, five-minute intermission. Okay, and welcome back to the June 6th Planning Commission meeting. We're moving on now to item 10.2. This is a tentative subdivision map, TSM 0501-G5 Architectural Elevation Review. So this is consideration of typical elevations of single-family residences, noting colors, materials, and finishes in accordance with condition number 109 of the approved tentative map, and find the project to be categorically exempt from SEQA. And Mr. Rivas, I believe you have the staff report.
Thank you. A little background, this is in reference to tentative subdivision map 0501. It's Cottonwood Park, Phases Four and Six, which was approved by the City Council October the 29th of 2010. Cottonwood Park Four and Six is a Phase 39 parcel, single-family residential plan development project consisting of three parcels totaling 6.2 acres. Phase Four would contain 19 single-family residential parcels. Phase Six would contain 20 single-family residential parcels. This subdivision is generally located north of Clay Street, east of the Cottonwood Park Apartments, more specifically at the north end of Constellation Avenue, approximately 100 feet from its intersection with Clay Street, adjacent and south of Roden Court and Parvelli Hill Drive. So this item is before you just to provide compliance with condition of approval 109 of the tentative map, which basically states the project proponent shall submit general descriptions, and I stress the word general descriptions, and typical elevations of the single-family residences within Phases Four and Six, to note the color, materials, and finishes to the planning commission for approval prior to recordation of the final map. So you've all been provided the, of the elevations showing the color and the materials. They're also on the wall behind you if you need to refer to them. So following the recording of the final map, Williams Homes, they're a contract, construction track home builder. They're proposing to build these homes within the subdivision. And Williams Homes is offering four, four-plan options, both single and two-story homes, and three exterior style options for the homebuyers. The proposed, and this is, this is what we're sort of calling this style of home, it's what we call a mountain ranch style, and it uses architectural features such as gable roof form, single-story shed, roof accents, vertical windows, wood trim, horizontal siding, stucco, board and batten, and stone. The proposed elevations are compliant with the architectural design guidelines of the City of Placerville Design Guide. The Development Guide requires that all structures do demonstrate some pedestrian orientation, well-defined entries, windows, decorative elements, and appropriate ornamentation. As proposed, the elevations do represent a collection of varying residences that will achieve an established cohesive and unifying architectural style specifically for facade articulation, scale, and proportion such as the elevations shown. And there's the options one, two, three, and four, will strive to enhance the pedestrian experience. Exterior colors proposed are primarily earth tones with grays, greens, blues, and beiges. The Development Guide recommends that color schemes should be relatively simple with a single base color preference. However, all color schemes should be utilized in a way that all facade and roofline elements are unified. It is staff's opinion that the selected color palette and use of colors on the proposed elevations is complementary and substantially consistent with the recommendations from the Development Guide, such as color schemes do establish a sense of place and overall cohesiveness for the neighborhood. The building elevations are also comparable with the single-family homes constructed within Cottonwood Park Phase One that are located along Clay Street and are consistent with the Cottonwood Park development plan. So with that, staff is recommending that the commission approve the mountain ranch architectural theme as presented by Williams Homes and as shown in the submitted artist's conceptual building design elevations dated May 18th of 2023. That concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you. And as I can barely write my name on the ground with a stick, I will have only a few comments, but I will first open it up to my fellow Commissioners. Start with Commissioner Carter?
I have no questions of staff.
Fantastic. Commissioner Lepper?
No questions.
Commissioners, Commissioner Keeney? All right, I can go first because I have some.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get oriented. I think I need a clarification on the figure two in the staff report.
Uh huh.
Three, there are three facade treatments called out. And then as I look at the plan set, I just want to.
You don't see them.
I don't, oh, I see, there's.
You don't see the visual interest.
So scheme A, okay. Now I, now I'm up to speed. So what we see in the big plan set, this is, this is what, for example, Plan 1C will, they will all look like that. Plan 2A will all look like that. There aren't any variations in whether it's stucco, wood, stone treatments.
I believe there are variations, and I think the applicant or the applicants were represented, I believe the representatives from William Homes is here and the homebuilders are here. They will actually be constructing model homes, and then the prospective homebuyer will have the ability to make a choice with the four basic types, and there's different elements they can pick and choose, that whatever matches their tastes for the particular home. But what you see behind you is essentially the options that would be fully available to the prospective homebuyer.
Thank you for that. And I apologize for my confusion here in the last minute. I will say I do think this is well done, the proposal, but should the planning commission want to make some minor modifications to the proposed plans, how do we codify that? Just simply by amending the recommendation and, you know, and that was, amend the recommendation given by staff in the report?
I would say.
I guess what I'm asking Mr. Rivas is how much leeway do we have?
Well, again, I think these are, it's, this is staff's opinion, so the commission may have a completely different opinion. You may not like anything that's being presented. I think staff was, you know, was, feels very favorable about what's being proposed. We think it's a real enhancement. We think it's, it's good, is anything that's existing within the Cottonwood Park subdivision, meaning the Phase One, which are the homes you see along Clay Street. Staff wouldn't see any reason to change anything. We think it's a real, it's a real nice style, but if there's some particular element or some feature in there you really feel strongly against, you could add additional finding then that basically changes or replaces some option or component that's presented to you.
So we have.
Thank you.
I think we have notable leeway then, is what I heard.
You do have some leeway, but I would hope that then you're making a finding that is not, you know, maybe there's some component that's not really forwarding the design guidelines or not consistent with the Cottonwood Park development plan.
Well, you know us, Pierre, we are forever reasonable. So I have a question then, where we see these attractive wooden post and beam features, is there anywhere that specifies that they will in fact be wooden or are they going to be painted over? Because the visual interest to me is, and it's actually called out in the staff report, identified specifically as a wooden post. So what's, what can you tell me about that?
To be honest, very little.
Okay.
That's what's, that's what's proposed. The details are written, of course, in great deal, great level of detail.
Okay.
The architectural drawing.
So it says wood, wood post means that's what it's made of. That doesn't mean what the final treatment is, so that's what we can ask the applicant. Then in the staff report, going back to page three, and the figures that are there, the first two, A and B, you know, really attractive with, as staff identifies the varied rooflines. But then in a number of the, a number of the proposals, again, this is me and I can barely write my name on the ground with a stick, so I'm probably not the best one. But some of the, some of the designs, two or three of them, just seem kind of flat or pedestrian. And so it would be on those designs that we could request maybe a little bit more visual interest. Did I understand your, your answer to Commissioner Keeney correctly?
If you feel that these are not providing that, sure.
Yeah, okay. So then that would be kind of going through each, each individual. Okay, so what I'd like to do then, any other, no other Commissioners had questions, I already asked that. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I'll invite the agent, the applicant, if you wouldn't mind coming forth, and maybe we can talk about some of these specifically and see what options that we have. And I'll, I'll start first of all with my question regarding the wooden posts, and then also a couple of these also have a wooden header. And I'm particularly fond of wood, so, and real, you know, things that look like wood. So what can you tell us about that?
Very good. Mike Von Quillik, Division President for Williams Homes. Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, hold on, let me make, is your microphone on? Microphone guy behind the curtain?
Green light is on.
Check, check, okay, good.
Green light is on.
All right, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, for the opportunity to present our bearings and elevations for Cottonwood Park tonight. First question you had was relative to the wood posts and beam element. If you refer to the color matrix on the last page, you'll see we've got clear finish, Sherwin-Williams on all the natural wood products.
I was supposed to read these.
I had to get my glasses taken.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, so natural, natural wood on the beams versus posts, clear finish, okay, great. And then what, and then is it going to just be clear finish over natural wood? And do we know what the wood's going to be?
Typically, it's a heavy timber, so it's a resawn dug fir.
Okay, great.
Eight by eight, 10 by 10, large, large heavy timber.
All right, so I give, I'm going to give you from personally really high marks for that because I do think that's a really great feature. that because I do think that's a really great feature. Let me see if I can pull out the specific elevations that I thought, to me personally, were a little bit lacking, and we can say that because the architect's not here, right?
If I could, on the elevation...
Go ahead.
We had initially internally proposed four, and these actually go through our owner, Lance Williams, hands and his wife Sadie. They're very intimately involved with the products that we produce and the homes that we produce for families and the markets we serve. And they're fairly simple people, and they appreciate that we can provide homes affordably and fashionably, if you will, for the markets, again, that we serve. And so we felt pretty good that, in fact, we felt very good that we'd worked quite a bit to produce these elevations. Everybody has a different eye for style and fashion, and given what we know about where we build and how we build, we felt like this was the best package that would serve the community here in Placerville.
Yeah, and again, I won't be harsh, just, so if we go to Plan Two, and I don't think there's a page number, but Plan Two elevations, I think the B elevation in the lower left-hand corner of at least what my printout is here, Scheme Four, Scheme Four, I think that elevation is really great. Scheme Two, A, seems really, really plain, particularly when compared to B. And I don't know if there's a substantial price between the two, but I can't tell if there's wood, there's no wood beam whatsoever, and there's nothing breaking up the, I can't even tell what material is, I guess that's a stucco material?
Yeah, what we tried to do with some of these, and this is one of the examples, is not to have a big, heavy wood post on every single front of every single home, right?
Okay, fair enough. Could we do something else, though? This is just my opinion, but something else with A, that big stucco field, to me, just, it's broken up by the window, but it just seems like it needs something else. That's just my comment. Don't have to answer me yet because I've got four other commissioners here who may just tell me to go pound sand. That was my impression of that, and I'm only concerning myself with the street elevations. As you heard the discussion earlier, we only care about things that are visible from the street, and the rest of it could all be tarps, you know, strung up by, you know, baling wire because that's all our concern is. Let me see, that was the big one. And the same thing then, if I go to Plan Three, Scheme Two, A, kind of, well, I'll take that back. That's got the nice, I can see the wooden post is integrated there, so I'll leave that alone. Those are all fine. The stucco, the broad stucco fields, we're talking about mountain homes, though, just as a material for me, I like to see the stucco less rather than more. Again, personal opinion, right? And I don't tread into this area very often as a commissioner because it's not my money, right? So, but since we have the opportunity to make comments, the other, I think the other elevations, yeah. And then the roof elevations, going back to the staff report, three, because I like what the staff report called out, I don't need more, in the varied rooflines in A and B, but I don't see them quite as much in the actual proposals, only on a few. So I'll just leave it there. I don't know how my other commissioners feel about any of this. They may say it's all good and go for it. I concur with staff in their overall opinion that this is a very quality project. I think it'll be a great enhancement. This is now just about, you know, the last 2% of what we might have input on, so. Commissioner Smith?
I guess consistent with what you described, there is this adjective that comes to mind about plebeian, pedestrian. If you look at the illustration, I think it's number, page four, on this sheet, it goes with the application, and it gives illustrations of four homes in the area. All of them have front porches, to some extent, depending upon the era that it's built, but yours don't seem to have that. And if a post is a problem, I think when I was down at Home Depot, I think it's like a 12 by 24, 12-inch by 4-inch, 6-inch beam is like $64 or something. So we're not talking about big money, but it does add to the visual appeal and substantial quality of the home if it has some kind of porch beyond what you described here.
So we included the floor plans in the original package, and I do have them with me if you'd like to see them. There are porches on all the homes. That's actually a big deal with Lance and Sadie to kind of enhance the feeling of community amongst the neighbors. It's a big, big deal with them.
Sure.
And I would point you to our Williams Homes website where you can literally see a porch on just about everything we build in every community that we build in because that's a big deal. The family and the community interactions, it's, we incorporate that in any opportunity we can. So for example, on the Plan Three, just right in front here, we've got, it's six feet deep, it's not dimensioned to the width, but I'd say it's pretty close to 15 feet wide on the Plan Three. And again, if I can approach, I'm happy to share these, or if you want to take a look at them later separately, we can do that. But all of these homes have some element of some sort of porch, uncovered porch in the front.
Well, if I'm looking at, if I could on that point, if I'm looking at Plan Three, so all of these, C, I can almost get a, maybe it's just my perception on the drawings, I can't tell the depth perception. So let's take, let's just go ahead and take Scheme Three, listed as B there. I'm looking at Plan Three front elevations. So we're on the same page. Let's look at B. What is the, what, there's, how much, geez, what, concrete pad is in, in front of the house from the front door to wherever? What's that distance?
So I don't have fully dimensioned floor plans...
Okay.
...all elevations, but what I can tell you is if you look at the shed roof on the first floor above the entry door...
Is that it?
They appear...
I can find it, we can find it right here. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And to be clear, the scheme numbers only indicate the paint scheme.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
The A, B, and C elevation is simply the call-out of what the individual...
What page?
...style is going to look like. The paint schemes are the scheme numbers identified.
Okay.
Going back to your question, looking at, if you can, for example, look at this element of the roof, this is called a shed roof that is over the front porch, that's all about the same size, and on the dimensioned floor plan that I have here, it's six feet deep from the back wall where the windows and the door are...
Okay.
...to the front of that overhang, at least on the patio, and then there's another overhang on top of that.
Yeah, I'm seeing covered, I mean, I'm finding covered ports.
And again, I'm happy to show you these if you guys...
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm finding covered ports on all of these now, thank you. Okay. Any other comments, commissioners? Commissioner Carter?
Mr. Smith?
Commissioner? Thank you. Commissioner Keeney?
Thank you for your presentation. Do you have any sense of the percentage of the different plans that you're showing us? What do you, what does your market research show you? What do you think's going to be popular here in Placerville? Do you have any sense of that?
So we did perform a market study. Thank you for asking that. It tells us two things, there's really two different buyers here. Appears to be a young family, kind of a move-up buyer, and a segment of the buyer profiles that's in retirement stage. And so we've very clearly heard that, and that lends itself to single-story homes for obvious reasons. I'd love to have one myself. And so there will be a, what we would consider to be a reasonable amount of single stories. For anywhere we can fit them, we will. Some of the setbacks on the lots, we had some discussions with Pierre, who was very helpful navigating that with us, to get the mix that we think is appropriate for the community, and we're looking forward to getting started on it.
If I understand correctly, you think that in this market, the single-story, the slightly smaller options will be preferred, but then there will be some buyers who are going for the larger Plan Three and Four?
For sure, yeah. The buyer profiles, it's definitely segmented, whereas in some of the markets we serve and in other areas of the region, you'll see, you know, young families, and that's all you see. You go out to West Park, and that's all you see because of the schools and, you know, the jobs and all of that stuff. But here, you guys have a very unique community, and we're really happy to be part of it. And there's definitely different buyers. We've heard from some of them already, they're ready to go right now, so we're excited about that.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
I want to thank you, I think it's a thoughtful design package that you've presented to us. I do have one concern, though, is the option for the three-car garage. And I, looking at the elevations, I'm trying to appreciate that, the need for, you know, larger garages, and I cannot remember the CCNRs, but most of them say, you know, no cars on the street or in the driveway, so you may be trying to accommodate that. But with the option for the three-car garage, did you think about making maybe that third car in a tandem parking situation as opposed, when we look at the extension to add horizontally a larger garage, especially on Plans One and Two, it really dominates the facade?
Well, yes, it may, but there's also a little bit of the architectural elevation that you don't see unfortunately because we don't have them drawn just yet. But the one thing that we've heard consistently from buyers, and we've seen it in real life, is that tandem garage spaces rarely house three cars because it's not conducive to going in and out of your home. What happens is it becomes a workout room or a wood shop, and then the other car's out on the street or in the driveway or whatnot. And anytime our buyers tell us what we want to hear on three cars, it's they want that extra space. They don't, the tandem garage doesn't serve the buyers well, so we...
I hear that, and I can see why you got that kind of response. In modern houses that I have seen, it's kind of like, you know, that extra car, if it's a car at all, it's kind of that extra one that does it, maybe comes out on Sunday, for example. But I would like to know what your survey indicated as to the need for the three cars. Again, especially for the smaller format, I think it starts to dominate your facade. For the Plan Three and Four, you know, I look at the elevations where you're showing us what it would look like with that larger garage, and it kind of fits in with that facade. But how much, how many of those do you think you're going to end up building?
You know, we tossed it back and forth as we were working through the conceptual designs on these plans, and we knew that the market study was telling us that, we'd heard it from the buyers. I wouldn't say it'd be very many, that's why we proposed it as an option rather than a standard, so that, you know, first of all, most of these lots won't take it, right? So it's a very unique circumstance where a buyer's going to approach us and say they want that, and then we actually will have a lot to fit it. But we did think it was important enough to include in this package just so the commission was aware that this could be an option for something, for somebody that would walk in the door and want a full car, three cars.
When I see three cars, when I see a three-car garage, I see two cars and a shop or two cars and a speakeasy. I mean, so that's just extra space, doesn't mean a car has to go in there, so...
Well, another thing to consider, too, is with CCNRs, I know in some developments, like I said, you're not allowed to have that car, that extra car out on the street. And in a lot of neighborhoods, you'll have a two-car garage, that's just the shop, and all the cars, you know, five or six cars are out, you know, out on the street or in the driveway, then none of them are in the garage. So I'm trying to get a sense of what our new market is and how you're trying to accommodate the needs of our community.
We try to do the most accommodative plans for what the buyer profiles and the market studies tell us, and that's what this was telling us, is that we, anytime we have the opportunity, we should be trying to fit that. The counter to that is there's just not many opportunities for it to happen, but we wanted it to be part of the package.
On that point, with the three-car garage, is it, is it designed, or would it be possible to design it as a couple-of-foot setback? So it's not in the same, let's see, horizontal, vertical, same vertical plane all the way across, right? So it's not one line all the way across from the, you know, the front door all the way, that third shop, or that third, third...
I don't think that's unreasonable.
...three-car garage sits back?
I don't think that's unreasonable, it definitely breaks it up.
Yeah, you could set it back like maybe two feet, right? So then now you have, that's almost like the multi-gabled roof appearance.
So it has its own, it's not one humongous door, but it has a break, so...
Yeah, correct.
But then it also has the relief...
Correct.
...back on the lot.
Yeah, so that's doable.
So...
I don't think that's unreasonable. And if it serves, I, you know, I don't know what your protocol is, but we can certainly make that adjustment, and we come in for the plan checks, we can certainly go through that. If it's something that we need to memorialize now, we can do that, but we can certainly work that into the overall design, and assuming they have to go through your department before they go anywhere else, is that accurate?
Pierre, could you handle that administratively? That'd be something for when we have to do, that third-car garage option will be, have a slight setback from the main house? Can you do that internally, or do we have to put that here?
You may want to, you may want to memorialize it...
Okay.
Something, just maybe a preference. Put a one-foot setback, is that, is that fair?
Yeah, any offset, I think any offset that provides visual, you know, visual break is sufficient. We won't call, we won't specify it, won't tie your hands, just...
Yeah, we'll make that work, for sure.
Okay. Other, I didn't mean to cut you off there, Commissioner Keeney.
That's perfectly all right. You know, I appreciate the, as ideas come forward, so we don't lose something, we can capture all of that. So I'm just making a note for myself, that three-car option, have a setback. Another, another thing that occurred to me was choosing different colors. What we're seeing here is kind of a white garage door. Again, if you're having the third option, maybe something that blends in or is dark as a, anyway, we can talk about that once we let our presenter sit down. But I think those are all the questions I had. I was concerned about the three-car garage and the options that we have, so, yes, those are all my questions. Thank you, I appreciate your patience and...
I bet. Thank you for having me. Just to put a period on the color scheme thing, we've got six color schemes proposed for the four, for the four-plan types and three elevations, and I would just add, kind of for context, four plans on with three elevations each is a lot for a 39-home subdivision. So we really tried to get this right because we feel like there's a lot of diversity in the buyer profile as well as the lots themselves. There's no two lots there that are the same, and we wanted to take advantage of that. And so I actually kind of had to fight for that other plan because it's not something that we do every day, but we got it, and I think it's going to look great when it's all said and done.
Commissioner Carter?
Thank you. I also want to commend you for these, these are really excellent plans. I just have a couple of quick questions.
Thank you.
I like the idea of continuity, but there's also, you know, an idea of too much continuity. We don't want to have a cookie cutter neighborhood, obviously, and so these homes, I understand, will be built to order according to lot limitations. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
We will typically, when we start our model homes, will release a group of probably six, what we call spec homes, in advance of pre-sales, and then sell as we go. We will, we have a plotting matrix that will tell us what we can and can't do, a constraints analysis that will tell us what we can and can't put on each lot. So for example, if there was one of the smaller lots and somebody wanted a plan for it, obviously it's not going to work. But we know we're fairly flexible, particularly in today's environment, with allowing people to kind of pick and choose. We want to, we want to guide them and help them in that process, and we feel like that's part of our job as their homebuilder, to help them make the best decision. We don't sell them homes, we let them buy them from us. And so, you know, we just want to be part of that process and do the best thing that we can for them. We're not like other homebuilders.
Understood. I guess my concern would be that, you know, if you put the model homes out and you get, you get 17 orders for Plan 1C, right? Obviously, we don't want to see 17 of the same homes.
We would not allow.
So, okay, yeah. So I mean, are there requirements for any kind of variety? Would you, I mean, how does that work? Like?
It, I wouldn't say, I mean, there's certainly nothing in the conditions of approval that specify that. But we, as a builder, would never allow that.
Okay.
We care about the communities that we leave for our home buyers. And to see 17 of the same thing, number one, it couldn't happen there. But more importantly, we just wouldn't let it happen.
Okay. Next, that's one thing I appreciate is, you know, driving up through the older cottonwood sections, is that they, you know, they do appear to be regular neighborhoods that are not just cookie cutter, you know, plop down a bunch of the same homes. I really appreciate that. I also had the same concern with the three-car garage. It does seem very incongruous with, especially with these smaller plans. So I appreciate that that point about the the offset. I definitely support that, to give some visual relief on that, on that third-car garage. I like the color plans. The earth tones are great. I do believe that you guys have good pedestrian experience. I mean, everything, it's just those couple of concerns that I have that seem to be addressed. Otherwise, I think this is, this is great. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
I will note on on the three-car garage, on on two plans, you show the three-car option to be on the same plane as the main two-car garage. On one of them, you show it as a setback. So the condition would simply be that for any three-car garage option, it's always a setback.
That's a, that's an easy fix.
Funny, it's it's in some, but not others. Other commissioners, any any comments? Any comments on any of the, the visual exterior? So I want to go back to, in the staff report on page three, they show a couple of these homes with the varied roof lines. But that doesn't show up very often. I don't see it at all in the Plan Two elevations. I saw it in the Plan, Plan Two, Plan, well, Plan Two doesn't show it right here.
So it's on your Plan One.
It's only Plan One that has that?
And on your, if you look at the Plan Three note, doesn't have it because it really doesn't, I mean, it has it on the on the Plan C, on the Plan Three.
Yeah.
And the A, right? So you've got the the large gable on on Plan B, or Plan B.
Two stories, it's, wouldn't matter, wouldn't apply anyway. Plan One C, Plan Two A. Plan One C doesn't have it. Plan Two A doesn't have it. It's a little bit confusing to get oriented on what's what.
So it's on the One A and the One B.
One A and One B.
Not on the Two. Trying to break it up a little bit.
Okay. All right. Yep.
And you've got Two on the on the Three A and Three C.
It's on the, okay, all right. And then to my fellow commissioners, any?
Well, again, trying to break that up.
Any consideration for breaking up some of the stucco planes on any of these?
So we did talk about that quite a bit. And what we've, what we kind of landed on was, you know, what we presented.
Sure.
It, we, we probably spent about three hours as as a team after everyone had initially commented amongst themselves. So again, we felt like this was what we felt was the best path for the plan set.
Okay.
Using everybody's input. And Lance really gets the seal of approval on everything.
Well, since none of my other commissioners are going, yeah, I think that's probably a good consideration. It's probably not going anywhere. I think the only consensus we have, aside from the fact we like most of everything you presented, is that any third-car garage is going to have a some offset for visual.
You got that. I got it noted.
And that's it? That's, I think that's all we've got. We'll have to memorialize that in the motion. Any other discussion? Well, questions of the applicant? Anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to this project? And thank you for for being here, by the way.
Bet. Thanks for the opportunity.
Anyone else that wants to to address us on this? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and return it to the commission for vote to recommendation. What is the action? It's vote to recommend and approve, to vote for approval. So I think we could probably entertain a motion to approve, with the one condition being added that any three-car garage options would have an offset from the.
I'd like to know how the other commissioners feel about specifying a, maybe a darker color or contrasting color for the garage doors on, again, on Plan One and One and Two. If you look on the first page, I know we're all flipping through all of these, but I think consistently, and as I look at the color scheme, too, on the last page, the they are proposing that the garage door for, if I'm reading this right, exterior would be, it's called stamped concrete for Scheme One, and it's called grays harbor for Scheme Two. I, as I mentioned, I think it's a, it kind of dominates the facade, the light-colored garage door. I like the look on Plan Three B, where you've got a darker garage door. So I would like to know how the rest of you feel about maybe specifying that they come up with an alternate color rather than light, the stamped concrete or grays harbor for those smaller floor plans. It doesn't bother me as much when I look at Plan Four A. That's kind of much, much more street fundage. And so the garage is over on, you know, just on one side. And you have the relief, the covered porch, and then the other side of the house. And so it really breaks it up. And I think even though that in that one, it's light-colored, my concern isn't the color so much as kind of breaking it up a little bit. How does, how do the rest of you feel about specifying that they find a contrasting or a darker color for those two plans?
About the same as you felt about the stucco.
Well, you know, I used to have a stucco house. I kind of think that the.
I'm not opposing.
The way they've drawn it kind of looks like my old house. So.
I.
Is that something that the homebuyer picks when they are picking out their features? The color of the garage door? Or is it an automatic?
So if I, if I could, again, thank you. No, we typically would not allow a change to the color scheme that changes the day they close escrow, and they go to Home Depot and buy what they want. And so, you know, we try to keep them in a box if we can. But at the end of the day, it's their home, and they can kind of do what they want. And there's, there's, we don't, we don't have a homeowners association that mandates this type of of change or anything like that. So.
So you.
I'm comfortable with it as is.
Okay, I'm looking at.
And that's important. Thank you for reminding me that, you know, it gets back to your comment about the wood also, is that, you know, as soon as these houses are sold, homeowners can do whatever they want with them. They can change that. So that's an important thing to keep in mind, that this is all temporary. So.
And I don't know, Mr. Evas, do the CCNRs specify, other than, are they just kind of general that the the color schemes of the the houses, is there going to be architectural control over the choices of colors?
Yeah, the CCNRs are very general. And my my recollection of the CCNRs are not dictating the color.
That's correct. There's, there's no architectural control committee for this community.
I thought there was a court case out of Eldorado Hills where the homeowner painted their house something that defied the CCNRs, and the court ruled in the homeowner's favor.
Yeah, that was an extreme yellow paint that they applied to that house.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how the CCNRs read in that case. I was working for the, I was with Eldorado County at the time. But I don't recall exactly what it was, other than it was an extreme yellow house that I think was driven from the complaints of the neighbors to the the CSD.
Yeah. Just for the record, I'm, I think I'm with Commissioner Lepa. I think I'm good with it as submitted, with the one exception that we're going to require the offset of the, so. Any other questions, comments? Got a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. Is it just, I don't even know what I'm moving.
Motion to approve as submitted.
Submitted with the the amendment that the third-car garage options will have a setback to be determined by the planning, the builders. And also that the meeting date on the staff report should reflect that this is taking place in 2023, not 2022. And I think that's it.
I'll second the motion.
I'd like to add a friendly amendment that that setback, it was my understanding that that would just apply to Plans One and Two, as opposed to all four of them?
On the three-car garage?
On the three-car.
I thought she, I thought it was worded, any plan, any.
Inclusion.
Any plan allowing a three-car, that way we don't have to call it out, any plan allowing a third-car option.
Any plan?
Any plan allowing a third-car option. Anytime there's a third-car option.
Or any of the.
It would have, anytime there's a third-car option, it would have to be an offset.
That's fine with us.
And it's already exists in a couple of the plans, too.
That plan's already there.
Does that work with Four?
Yeah.
So it's Plan Three that already had the offset?
Yeah, one of them already had the offset and two of them didn't. But they'll, they'll, they'll make all of them.
Yeah, that's fine.
If you can do, if you can do a third-car garage, it'll be, it'll have an offset.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's the motion. You all right with that?
I'm looking at the roof line on Plan Three. And I'm, I wonder if that setback is, well, I guess if they do the the roof, if it mirrors the roof of the main house, then that would look fine. They, they'll have to change all of that.
Setback already exists in Plan.
For Three?
Yeah, that's the one that already has the built-in setback.
Built-in setback. Okay. All right. They've already covered it.
Good to go?
Okay, I'm good.
Any other discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chair Fran?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepa?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. I don't believe this is appealable, is it?
Good question. I would say that it is appealable.
Okay. It might be appealable, 10-day appeal process if somebody decides they don't like what we just approved. But I don't think you have to worry about that.
Understood.
Thank you very much. Project looks great.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Exciting.
Thanks, everybody.
Long time, long time coming. All right.
Fran, I'm sorry, who seconded the motion?
He did.
Chair Friend. All right, we have no continued items. We have no new business. Brings us to item 13, matters from commissioners and staff. Staff reports, please.
Nothing to report, other than I did provide the commissioners with a brochure regarding the.
Oh, yeah, I saw it.
Public art plan. It is being basically proposed by the Arts and, Arts and, Arts and Council Eldorado.
Culture.
Arts and Culture.
Found mine before he found his. No, I didn't. Dang it. There it is. I found it before Pierre found his. Well, anyways, so, so Arts and Culture Eldorado basically put on RFP, and they selected a consultant. It's a very well-known consultant that will be preparing a public art plan for Placerville. So I wanted you, I wanted the commissioners to be aware of that. As that progresses, we'll bring that art plan to the Planning Commission at some point in time for review and comment. And eventually, it'll be submitted to the City Council for approval. So we're pretty excited about that. So we'll keep you appraised at the progress of that plan. That brochure provides you with information where you can go on their website, seek information about it. And that's all I have to report on. Thank you.
Before I notice that, okay, we have, is the wagon train coming?
Yes, I believe the wagon train is coming on June.
June 10th, like, like soon, like in a couple days.
Yes.
There's a big celebration on Friday in Pollock Pines at the community center also, where there will be live music, and it's going to be really an awesome event. So, yeah, so Pollock Pines on Friday, and then Main Street on Saturday.
Yeah. Good. And then we have the county fairs coming up, the following. Okay. And then Too Early to Consider National Night Out. All right. Anything else from staff? Oh, meeting, second meeting this month?
There is a meeting scheduled for June 20th.
June 20th?
Yes.
Okay, 6:20. And then.
The following meeting is on July 4. We will not have a a meeting on that day.
Okay.
Meeting after the next meeting will be July 18, I believe.
anticipating a meeting on July 18?
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, so June 20, and then 7/18. Fantastic. All right. Anything else from staff? All right. Item 13-2, Planning Commission matters. Before I open it up for commissioners in general, let's hear from our special committee and the Historic Review Special Committee. Commissioner Smith, looks like you have the report this evening.
Good evening. We'll be fairly brief. There's about three matters to consider. One is that I did have contact with someone from the Interior Department locally who's going to give me contact with the folks in the Western Region who handle Interior Secretary's guidelines. So when it comes to questions like cost effectiveness and those kind of considerations, surely they've looked at it before. What standards do they have? What kind of guidelines? What have other bodies looked at? That's the kind of information that we would seek. Commissioner Carter and I have met a couple of times since our last meeting. One of the things that's happened is that the, this body has, for a long time, nearly 40 years, used the inventory of historic properties. We used it tonight. It's come up often. It's been very valuable, but it's outdated. The effort was always described as something that was a first start, needed to be completed, needed to be updated. So the folks who did that between 1984 and 1985 was the Heritage Association of Eldorado County, the second oldest historic preservation and education group in the county. And this past weekend, they unanimously moved to seek money from the city to fund that effort. So we've asked the staff to put this on the agenda for last time. Although Commissioner and I are predisposed to it, believe it's important, we want to present it to you. One of the nice things that people may not have noticed is it's not just that inventory that's on the website, but it's posters or signs that are all over the city. I gave two to the commissioners at the other end. This is an actual copy of a sign that's just up the street at Market on Main. This is an example of a number of signs like it throughout the town that are made possible because of that inventory. These folks are proud of it because it's helped to add to the value of their property. But also, they feel particular pride in the idea that they've come full circle. They have a market where in 19, 1853, there was a market. That was its initial purpose. And that's true for all of the, all over the city. You'll notice at the bottom on this markup, I've added a barcode, the QR code. So just like merchants on Main, you'd have a barcode that you could use to get additional information. Unlike the other product that has bronze and some heavy metals, there's nothing you can steal. You don't have to add a new sign. In this case, you just add it to Cal that adds the QR code. But there'd be other places, other properties that would be able to have the signage added if they wish. When you want to figure out the value that there was to the city, look back in 1984, the city provided $5,000. Looking at actuarial, look at the tabulations that are used to look at the cost of living, adjusted for inflation, that's just over $16,000 today, which turns out to be about a buck a day. So in terms of bangs for the buck, you've got your money. So we'll have a concrete proposal to present to you at the next meeting. And then we'll present to the City Council that idea. It's something that could have been done earlier, but. It, it's something that could have been done earlier, but the, uh, this particular association was going through revitalization, because there were a number of board members that had been there for 10 or 20, 30 years, and there's understandable burnout, so, thank you.
That's, that's excellent. Uh, any commissioners have questions of Commissioner Smith or Commissioner Carter?
I, uh, it occurs to me, is there, um, grant money available to help fund this?
Yes. Now, this is gonna be an assumption, but there are more grants available now than there were in 1985, number one. Number two is, uh, you would have an ability to reach out to a lot of the universities in the area, look for grad students, because a major cost is administrative, someone who's gonna handle the records of contacting property owners. That's gonna be very tedious and necessary, to go through, uh, records, titled records to ensure the history of property as well as the museum. So there's a lot of volunteer effort, but the administrative staff, uh, can be cut by using, uh, graduate students.
Excellent. So, uh, any other questions? So, um, updating historic prop, the inventory of historic properties, it, you, you would identify as a priority. Could you offer up for us right now, from where you sit, one or two other priorities? So we had like, top three priorities for right now, that you think that need to happen? Clearly, that, that the updating the inventory is one. I mean, maybe pursuing grant funds is, is another, but I don't know if, have you.
When you say two or three, are you referring to, on this topic, or?
You, no, your, your little subcommittee, I was just wondering if maybe you guys have brainstormed, you know?
Mr. Carter can.
We have.
Commissioner Carter.
These are like our top three priorities, and I think updating the historic inventory is one, right? And maybe grant funding is another, I don't know, but anything else?
Um.
Because I'd like to get these memorialized in the minutes, please.
Definitely, uh, engaging, uh, groups, um, in this conversation, uh, the disparate historical societies and disparate, um, groups that have been involved in the past. That is actually part of the founding, uh, resolution for the Historic Advisory Committee is to work with outside groups. So I would see that communication element to, to bring people to the table. And, um, as we talked about at the last meeting, having this subcommittee kind of adds a little bit of weight and lets people know that this is actually a, a thing that we're pursuing now. And so I see that communication factor as, as a big part of this, also just to, to bring people to the table, to participate.
Okay, and pursuing grant funding would be also another priority?
I, I see that down the road, but I, I fear getting too broad this early in the process. We're really trying to, I mean, obviously, just to bring light to this, um, responsibility that we have as a planning commission, that we're charged with doing, and just trying to make sure that we're holding up, uh, that, um, that responsibility. And I, I don't want to get too, too broad this early on in the process.
Fair enough. Uh, and maybe a tangential question, were you going to meet with the Association of Realtors?
That conversation has started, um, even with the city and, uh, Ed Carr. No progress since our last meeting on that front, but that conversation, it has been started and is occurring.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other commissioners have, uh, items to bring forth?
If, if you don't mind, I just wanted to, I appreciate you bringing up the D-Day. Um, I, I had a quick, a quick little thing I wanted to read, because in case nobody else mentioned it, but, um, 79 years ago today, members of the Greatest Generation took part in what would become the largest amphibious invasion in military history, Operation Overlord, or as it's more commonly known, D-Day. On June 6, 1944, almost 160,000 troops from the United States, British Commonwealth and their allies became, have become the ultimate demise of the Third Reich, including one of the darkest chapters in human history. 2,500 of these soldiers were American boys who gave the ultimate, ultimate sacrifice in Normandy, where most of them remain, their bodies never making it back home to the country for which they paid the ultimate price. I just want to remember our history and always give thanks to those who contribute to the cause of liberty. So I just wanted to read that, because, thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Commissioner, and, uh, obviously you can tell that it was a, kind of an important day for me as well. Um, go home and watch The Longest Day, best movie ever made about the D-Day invasion. Uh, with that, uh, I will call our meeting adjourned. I think it almost exactly $2,100.
Oh, one more minute.
Thank you, guys.